Uh, Joanne, I guess you're calling the roll tonight. Thank you. Would you please do so?
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Steve Cole.
Here.
David Hochheiser.
Here.
Bruce Menon.
Here.
Sheila Spalding.
Here.
And Sean Riordan.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Could we please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Callahan?
All right. Thank you very much. Um, hello, everybody. Good crowd in here tonight. Um, do we have anybody who would like to give public comment in the room this evening? Nobody. All right. Seeing no public comment, hands, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Mr. Cole?
Yeah, we have a couple of warrants in aggregate. I move that the following name bills, the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $498,896.57 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second?
Any discussion? Are you not all those in favor of approving the warrant?
Aye.
Diana warrants?
That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
Uh, then we have minutes for 12:06. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from December 6th?
Sound low.
Second.
Any discussion about those minutes? No? There are none? All those in favor of approving the minutes from 12:06?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, great. Um, next up on the agenda is the student award presentation. Uh, Mr. Gallagher will be presenting this to Cedar Schumacher.
All right. Thank you very much. And as part of our school committee meetings, uh, there's an opportunity we get to recognize students and staff throughout the district. And tonight, it's an honor to recognize freshman Cedar Schumacher is being recognized for recently earning the first chair in the Northeastern Senior District Jazz Band through the Massachusetts Music Educators Association. Cedar's a trumpet player and is believed to be the first Newburyport High School student in at least a decade to earn such a spot in the Senior District Jazz Band. Cedar actually competed a year early, only as a freshman, competed against sophomores, juniors, and seniors to earn the spot and is one of the best trumpet players in the state. He actually started playing the trumpet in grade five. He also plays the guitar and the piano. Uh, he will move on to the audition and the spot for the All-State Jazz Band in January of next year. So congratulations to Cedar Schumacher. Such a great jazz band. Great. Take a quick photo walk. Here you go. Mayor Holliday and Mayor Lex Riordan, why don't you all jump up? Okay, so you can take the picture. All right. We're all smiling. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, next up is the Newburyport High School Student Representative Report by Olivia Hansen and Avery Hochheiser.
All right. First, thanks to the work of the Bring Change to Mind students. The high school was engaged last week in an anti-bullying and positivity week. Dakota Tucker and Sidney Getteman spearheaded this effort in response to student use of the Yik Yak app two weeks ago. All week long, the school participated in activities aimed at promoting positivity throughout the building. On Wednesday, everyone was encouraged to wear blue in support of anti-bullying. The group made use of Instagram throughout the week to model positive uses of social media as well. Additionally, tomorrow, we will close out with some fun learning activities. Um, in other areas, um, invitation nights downtown are an awesome thing to take advantage of. The high school band continues to display their talent while creating a holiday vibe for everyone participating. Additionally, on December 13th, the high school's winter concert took place. Kudos to the band, orchestra, choir, and guitar students for putting on a fantastic show.
Um, a primary goal of our school improvement plan is to create a programming that helps students to explore their passions and interests alongside their courses studies. With the addition of the College and Career Counselor, Mr. Smith, the high school is in the process of developing a college and career center for the school. With this work, we intend to build a community, we intend to build community partnerships so that every student has the opportunity to experience an internship or job shadow while in school. On Friday, December 10th, with the support of Mayor Holliday, the Chamber of Commerce, the Newburyport Rotary, and the NEF, the high school hosted a breakfast focused on building community partnerships for this purpose.
Is that all?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions about?
No, I just wanted to take a moment and thank the student leaders at the high school. Um, we've been talking a long time about student voice. Uh, we've been talking about, um, how to get students more involved. And I just want to thank our student leaders of the high school, along with Mr. Wolf and his administrative team, um, for being very proactive uh, with the Yik Yak anonymous, um, you know, posts that were, that were done, uh, and for them to utilize their student advisories and to address it, uh, as students. So just really proud of the student leadership. And I just want to thank our students here tonight, along with all the other students, being proactive and making a real positive impact on the school culture there. So thank you.
Great. All right. Uh, next up on the agenda is the Model UN Conference 2021 trip highlights. Uh, this is from NHS teachers Matt LaChapelle and Wendy Crofts, uh, as well as the students. I think you guys can stand there because that boom, that boom mic will catch your sound pretty well for the people watching at home.
Sure.
So just like right, right near the, uh...
Sure. So, so I'm Wendy Crofts, and Matt LaChapelle couldn't be here tonight. He was, he's pretty sick and, uh, is at home. And so I brought two awesome students with me.
Under.
Yeah, I'm Desmond.
And, uh, so I was just going to tell you what we did, and then I'll let them talk about the highlights. Because I'm sure you guys have some highlights. You can probably talk about the committees you were on. But, uh, basically, as part of the World Affairs and Diplomacy class at Newburyport High School, uh, we study world affairs and diplomacy, and we want to make the class as real world as possible. And so we, every year, try to attend a conference in person to practice diplomatic skills. And so this year, we went to the Rutgers University Model United Nations, uh, conference, which was held from Thursday, November 18th until Sunday, November 21st. And it was an in-person conference. We were all masked. Um, we all had to have negative COVID tests in order to, to attend. Um, we took a bus down and basically never unmasked, actually, until, I think we were in our dorm, in our rooms. It was the only time that we could pretty much unmask. Other than that, everybody was in committee with other students from all over, uh, the country. It was pretty much mostly just students from the US this year because of COVID. But, um, there were about a thousand students in attendance, and our school represented the Republic of Iran. And so we had our work cut out for us. Um, I'll tell you a few of the things they did to prepare for the conference. Um, basically, um, once we found out we were Iran, we, and they, and we received our roles, students were each assigned to different committees. And they had to become experts in their topics in front of the committees. So the committees that were represented this year were the International Labor Organization Committee, and some of the topics for that were indigenous, work for, finding work for indigenous and tribal peoples, as well as child labor. Um, SOCOM, or the Social, Humanitarian, and Cultural Committee, which I'll let Desmond talk a little bit more about that in a second. Um, so let's see, the UN Economic and Financial Committee with topics such as assuaging the impact of international sporting events such as the Olympics on local communities, as well as addressing debt in developing countries. We also, uh, had one representative to the Special Commission on Women. And let's see, we had two representatives to the UN Office of Internal Oversight Services with topics of regulation of the United Nations Peacekeeping Forces, which has been in the news of late, and the misuse of UN resources. Uh, we also had representatives to the UN Environmental Program with another timely topic, environmental damage after natural disasters. And let's see, another topic or another group was the UN Commission on Sciences and Technology for Development. And that included, um, research in modern biotechnology, which again is also pretty timely. Uh, we had representatives to the UN World Health Organization, which Derek can talk more about it, but talk about a timely topic. Um, one was on epidemic management and prevention, and the other was vaccine hesitancy. So anyways, you had a great topic. Uh, another, and another, uh, group was UNICEF. And that group, we only had one representative, but it was all about, basically, access to food and clean drinking water, especially during times such as during a pandemic. And then we, so all of those students all represented Iran. Um, and then in addition, we did have one student, um, represent Japan on to the International Monetary Fund. And they talked about, um, let's see, a few very timely topics. The rise of the East in the time of Western financial hegemony, as well as the IMF's role in firefighting financial crises, such as what was caused by COVID. So it's, you know, it was really, really kind of cool to see everybody engaged in real-world, uh, situations and trying to do some problem solving, um, just to get their sort of ticket to admission. Um, most of you had to research two different topics and write two different position papers, and that's kind of their ticket in. And then once they're there, um, they use the skills that they learned in our class on, um, parliamentary procedure and so forth, to kind of learn how to interact with other diplomats represented by students around, from around the country, uh, to solve these problems and to arrive at some solutions. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Derek and Desmond, and you can talk a little bit about what you found were the highlights.
Um, one highlight I found was talking to students from schools across the country and seeing how their schools worked in different to ours and seeing their views on...
Could you guys just, uh...
We can't hear you.
And in the back, it's a little bit harder here, but just, I mean, almost yell if you could. We won't, we won't mind. I know it's nerve-wracking to be up there.
Um, one highlight of the trip would be talking to students around the US and seeing how their schools worked in different to our schools. And seeing how their clubs were ran, seeing how their model U.N. clubs were ran, and how they get into ours. It was really fun.
And obviously, they both hit the, hit the nail right on the head there. Um, a big thing for me that I always enjoyed is that, um, excuse me, uh, I was on, um, so...
Yep.
I can never pronounce it right, because I always want to say it, it's like, um, social, but because not everyone speaks English and not everyone has the SH, it's like Sakhub or something. I don't know. Um, but in my committee, I had the pleasure of talking about like rights of activists and stuff like that, which I found very interesting because here we live in America, we think activist rights should immediately be protected and whatnot. And then I had to go and represent Iran, who thinks quite the opposite, that, um, activist rights should not get protected. Um, so I think the Model U.N. program is just a really fun display of putting yourself in someone else's shoes and just being able to understand, like, someone else's point of view, which can be especially important nowadays.
And, and I have to tell you that Desmond was our head delegate, so he kind of represented all of us as, you know, as a team to the entire conference. And, um, you know, so we wanted to recognize him for that as well, just publicly, because that's a little bit additional work on your end. So...
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Bruce?
As a result of the work that you're doing, what does the committee, is there a report that comes out from the committee with, with findings or recommendations? I just was wondering.
Well, from what we understand, it was kind of interesting. At the opening, um, ceremony, the goal of the conference was to try to stop, um, creating solutions to problems that are relying on solutions that have been proposed before, but to try to come up with some new thinking, maybe outside of the box thinking. Um, and so they were hoping to kind of run the committees a little bit differently to try to perhaps get some actual new ideas on the ground with regard to how to solve some of these solutions. Um, I haven't been back onto the site, the website, but I do believe they were going to try to consolidate, at least it sounded that way, at the opening ceremony, some of these ideas and try to propose them further. Um, the woman who was in charge of the, um, conference, she had actually just graduated, she was the Secretary General, she had just graduated from Rutgers a year before, and she was an ICU nurse and was kind of on the front line during COVID as well. And so I, you can kind of see her enthusiasm for seeing if people who are actually, you know, young and maybe not yet jaded could maybe come up with some solutions. And so she was kind of looking at, I think, you all, um, in hopes that perhaps we could change for the better and do whatever needed to happen, um, collectively, and maybe start a movement out of, out of this conference.
Anybody else?
Is there anything else on the docket for a model U.N. membership? Is there a spring conference right now?
Uh, not at the moment. We've had some students approach us, but at this point, um, we don't have any plans yet. Yep. But we're hoping to do another conference in the fall, you know, COVID permitting, for sure, uh, next year.
Great. Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
They didn't do this last year, right?
Yeah, last year, we, um, didn't do it because it was going to be, it was just turning into such a nightmare. We were going to try to go up to, um, the, the conference at McGill in Montreal.
Oh, right.
And then it went online, and they weren't really sure how it was going to run. And so we just decided it was best to just take a pass. So...
Great. Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, so just so everybody knows, I went back and stood back there. And it's definitely hard to hear in the back, especially with the sound machine or the, what do you call it? Air purifier back there. So if we just can yell louder at the table, that'd be great for everybody in the audience. Um... I, I can only talk so loudly, ma'am, though. But I, I stood back there next to you on purpose to hear, and I could hear it. But I, I mean, we can't scream. So I apologize. I just don't know how much we can, like, yeah, no.
Maybe we can, maybe we can look into moving the audience a little bit closer to us.
Sure. Yeah. Or turning off the air purifiers, um, because this room hasn't changed in four years. It's the same space. So... Yeah. Uh, so we will do our best. Um, we had finance subcommittee meeting on Thursday, and here with all those details is Mr. Stephen Cole.
Thank you. Uh, yes, the last finance subcommittee was on Thursday, December 16th. We did approve the minutes of the prior finance subcommittee meeting on November 12th. Uh, we also went over some, uh, small transfers, uh, from Ethenok Middle School totaling, uh, $323.31. All of those went from various supply lines into instructional materials. Uh, and since this was a non-personnel transfer, the request to move budgeted amounts to the instructional materials, general supplies, to more properly reflect for what the funds are being used for, and the transfer was approved. Uh, we also talked about, uh, changing policy to utilize Mass General Law Part One, uh, which involves Section 56 warrants for payment of bills, which would allow the school committee to designate, designate, pardon me, any one of its members to approve bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls provided. Uh, however, that a member may, shall make available to the board, committee, or other department head at the first meeting such, following such action, a record of such actions. And the chair of the finance subcommittee will be the designate, and a finance subcommittee would select another member of the subcommittee as backup. As the Division of Local Services has indicated, this is also possible. And all these were unanimously approved. And that's it.
Um, so I just have a little bit of question. I know we talked about this, so the, the 8C you're tabling for tonight, right?
That's right.
And that encompasses what Steve was talking about, I believe.
Well, we're passing the, um, do you want me to...
No, no, no. But I mean, just...
The warrant signature.
So the warrant signature is partially what we talked about and voted on in the subcommittee. Um, but I wonder if we're going to table that?
Not the warrant signature.
This is my question. It's kind of like, it's both. It's finance and it's in the policy book. So we approved it at finance, but there's issues with the language.
Apparently, the language that they approved is not what we have in our policy book. So it was slightly different, and we just wanted to iron out, iron out the differences and then bring it back to the committee.
Okay. Great. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cole.
Sure.
Uh, and next up, Ms. Spalding with the Policy Subcommittee, um, changes to two policies, uh, public participation and authorized signatures.
Yes. The first item up is file BEDH, Public Participation at School Committee Meetings. We had updated this last June, and we had added a very lengthy statement that the vice chair was to read. We have since then, um, condensed that statement. So that's what this new update is. It condenses that statement, and I would also, I was remiss and did not insert one line here. It's under the, there's a few bulleted lines, and one of them says... I'm going to find the one. Sorry. The first one, it says, "Speakers may offer objective criticism and/or ideas for school operations and programs as concerns them." Within that statement, we're going to insert, after the word "programs," um, we are going to insert on the agenda. So that it reads, "Speakers may offer objective criticism and/or ideas for school operations and programs on the agenda as it concerns them." So those are the two changes. Everything else is the same.
We're going to be voting on this one?
This is a first read.
Right. Um, I don't know. If anybody doesn't mind changing the rules so we can vote this in just before the changeover. Would that be all right?
I move, I move to waive the rules.
Okay.
So we can vote on this one, do you?
Okay. Um, and that's with the changes noted. Right. Okay. Um, any discussion about this further? No? No further discussion? All right. All those in...
It's important to let people understand how to bring something to the committee that's not on the agenda.
Sure.
Yes.
For whatever process you guys want to have to let in future, if the general public knows how to do that, we're good to go.
Yeah. We can end up putting that in the packets too as a standard, like...
Right, to email the school committee.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Uh, all right. All those in favor of, uh... I'm sorry, of, what is the word I'm thinking of? Of approving, uh, the changes to policy BEDH?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right. The policy changes passed for BEDH. Thank you. And then the next one.
The next policy in the packet is authorized signature. It's from Section D, File DGA, and we are changing it, as Steve just mentioned, um, per the recommendations of the Finance Committee, to require one signature as opposed to four signatures.
And we talked about this in finance, that while we, when we have it here in person like we do tonight, we'll get the four people, uh, the summer months, and then if there's weather, vent, or something that we can't be, can't get this packet passed around, the one person, um, chair of, of the subcommittee will do it, and then they're designee if they can't make it. Um, so we're not scrambling to get down to central office for four signatures.
And it just allows the school department to pay its bills more effectively.
Right, right. Um, so...
Well, that's...
I want to get a, if we can, just to be official, the waive the rules, since it's also the first reading, but I would like to get that passed before the, the changeover in January too. So you want to do the motion about waiving the rules on this one so we can do that?
Sure. I move that we waive the rules to consider the policy around signatures.
Second?
In one reading.
In one reading.
Yeah. Okay. The second. Uh, any discussion further about this?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. The changes to DGA have passed, and we're going to table IMC.
We're tabling the final, the, the, um, Budget Transfer Authority because we need to correct some of the language on it to make sure that it's standing with what's in the policy book.
And your next meeting is not till January, right?
That's right. So we'll bring this to the next meeting in January.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Spalding. Uh, next up, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Gallagher.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, just a few updates here. We, uh, Commissioner O'Reilly, um, in the DESC, we had a meeting with him via Zoom with all the superintendents in the Commonwealth regarding the mask mandates. As you all recall, the state was going to make their decision, uh, by January 15th. Um, Commissioner O'Reilly, because the Omicron variant has really thrown off the mask decision from the state, Commissioner has said he's going to wait on any masking announcement, um, until the state has a better and more complete information on this new variant. He said, "Expect decisions and guidance in early January." So I'm assuming when we come back from the winter break. As we all know, the state is seeing cases go up. Uh, it's not a lot of consensus right now among the medical community, um, with the idea of cases going down. If you recall, last year, we had the surge around the holidays. Um, and then the cases went down. But the Omicron variant, um, the medical professionals are watching these cases, and it may not be the similar pattern that we experienced last year. Um, and just the last piece, there are no plans, um, right now, according to the commissioner and the state, to close, um, and to go back to remote learning. So there are no plans, uh, in that. The federal government wants us to keep the schools open. Our state wants to keep the schools open. Um, so we're going to just await the guidance and the recommendations, uh, from the medical professionals. Other, uh, topics was emergency licensure. As we all know, there's a staffing shortage, uh, across the state in a lot of, I think, areas of employment, but especially in, uh, education. So they're extending, um, the emergency licensure till 2023. Our special, uh, special specialty licensure is, um, special education and ELL. Uh, we'll have more information on what that licensure extension is going to look like. Um, and I think those are the two big topics right now. Um, for the commissioner was the emergency licensure to assist districts, uh, you know, with the hiring process and the voids, uh, that we're seeing, uh, throughout. And then also, um, new, new updates when we come back from the vacation. Yes.
Do we have a, a sense of how many teachers are on this provisional licensure?
Uh, for us, I think we have, in our district, I would say less than a dozen.
Okay.
Um, right now, in, um, Ms. Zepulito, our assistant superintendent's been doing a great job working on getting not only the emergency licensure, but our teaching, uh, our teachers and staff certified. So, um, we're not seeing as many as we're seeing in some of the other districts. So, um, but it's good to know that we do have, you know, a little extra time to work with those educators to get them fully licensed.
Superintendent, is that...
Yes.
Is that allowing people to work under emergency license longer?
Yes.
Or is it allowing people to apply for emergency license longer than initially thought?
Both. It's both. Yes.
That's great.
Um, any other questions on those two topics? Um, just the, also our COVID updates and working with our medical advisory team. So we do have, um, some bullet points here and some statistics. Uh, right now, we have 39, um, school community members, uh, known cases of COVID since December 1st. There was nine staff and 30 students. Uh, since December 1st, we've had 151 students quarantined. Um, and we have 19 active cases right now with six staff members and 13 students. Current vaccination rates for our... Current vaccination rates for our district right now, the high school is at seventy-nine percent. And as we've been talking about the booster shots, right now, only twenty-five students at the high school have had the boosters. Um, Fresno Hand is at forty-six percent vaccination rate. Mullen is at forty-seven percent. And then the NOC Middle School is at sixty-five percent. As we all know, the vaccinations, uh, we continue to encourage boosters for staff and students that are sixteen plus. Uh, we encourage vaccinations, uh, for students, uh, ages five and older. And then for anyone that's listening tonight or watching, um, our school committee instead of Monday Night Football, you can use the vaxfinder.com to find local clinic and information on vaccination and boosters. Um, we've also, under the leadership of Lauren McDonald, uh, have applied to have another booster clinic for sixteen plus, and we're waiting for those dates. Um, so we're being very proactive with that. As we've all been seeing in the news the last three weeks, the, uh, Omicron virus and variant, uh, data suggests at this time, it's, as you all know, it's extremely transmittable, particularly in households. Uh, that's where we're seeing the majority of the spread. Earlier reports suggest it's less severe, although eighty percent of the cases of people, uh, coming down, uh, have been vaccinated. Common symptoms reported with the Omicron virus are cough, fatigue, and congestion. And boosters, as we all know, can increase and, uh, restore protection, uh, that is, you know, over time has, uh, waned. So really important, I think, for all of us to gather information and continue work with the medical professionals, um, with this new variant as information's coming in. Um, strategic planning focus group work continues for the district. Uh, the community groups, on December fifteenth, we led another strategic planning workshop, uh, with our community partners. Uh, that was with our Human Rights Commission members, our Diversity Equity Inclusion Alliance members, Newburyport Education Foundation members, and also some Rotary members. Uh, we work with the focus group using the same strategic planning protocols that we've used throughout the fall. We've also added a video outreach to ensure that people who are not able to attend the in-person focus groups have had the opportunity to hear the presentation and participate in our strategic priority with a quick survey and gather their information. And once again, I worked with the N C M Hub to tape that presentation, and they did a great job, and I want to thank them for their work and working with the schools. We also have participated and worked, uh, with student focus groups. On December eighth, we had over seventy members of the N H S Student Council work on our strategic planning, and they also participated in Portrait of a Graduate. And then this morning, we worked with over eighty middle school students utilizing the same protocols. So at, up to this point, uh, we've gathered input, uh, from August all the way to December with over seven hundred stakeholders within our school community, uh, through conversations with school staff, students, parents, local business owners, and city government officials. We've extend, have extensive feedback on our Portrait of a Graduate and identifying our strategic priorities, uh, for the school system. Our next steps right now, we complete the initial draft of a Portrait of a Graduate, which will include a, um, completion of the hundreds of ideas that we've collected. And we've provided a final round of feedback through that short survey. We identified, uh, an overall slogan, and we're working on creating a visual to share with the community. Uh, compile the final strategic planning report utilizing Amy Webb's Future-Based Cone of Planning approach. We've identified and shared strategic priorities gathered in the focus groups and through that one-question survey. We're also going to provide educators with another round of feedback. And as we established the five-year strategic priorities, and we'll develop the written report with the tactical planning and budget implications. So it's been a lot of work, um, but I'm really excited. We're, we're kind of at the end of our feedback module and gathering all the feedback. And now our team and the educators are gonna go through that, develop those common themes of what the community would like to see in the Portrait of a Graduate. And then our educators and administration, uh, will enact the, the strategies and the action steps. So that is our, uh, strategic planning update.
Superintendent, the video you did, that's the one that's on the homepage of the district site, right?
Correct.
First one under announcements?
Yes, so that can be found on our district website with the survey at the end.
Now Superintendent Gallagher, on the fifteenth, you shared with us, um, some of the results that were starting to come in from students, and I think it was very interesting to you what you were seeing. I wonder if you can share that and, um, if, if you noticed it happening today as well.
Right, it's, um, what was great to see is working with, um, I think a lot of the community members within our school community, um, and then when we were working with our students, both at the middle school and the high school, we saw a lot of common themes, shared vision, um, for both students and the adults. Sometimes when you're working with the students and, and you're doing another focus group with students only, uh, it may be different. Um, but what we're glad to see is those common themes that we're seeing coming out, both the students, our current students here, along with the adults. So, um, and I think you, you get that by, I think, the work that we've done, where we have so many people giving us feedback, you're going to start to see common themes when you have over seven hundred people participating, so. I just want to thank our extended leadership team and, and the administration throughout the district for really taking on a, kind of a whole new way of, a whole new approach of collecting feedback from multiple stakeholders within the community. Um, and that's why we're, we're pretty excited, uh, of where we're at right now.
Thank you. When do you anticipate the actual public document being released?
We would like to do in January, um, for our school committee, uh, and the community at large to kind of share the feedback and the common themes. Uh, our goal is, uh, to have the written document, uh, completed in February, uh, but really just kind of share out, uh, the work and the common themes for the community in January, and then continue to work with our, uh, not only administrative teams, but also the educators in the district to start to write, um, those new action steps for the five-year plan, along with the, uh, budget implications for each one of those.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions for the superintendent from anybody? Thank you, Superintendent Gallagher. Uh, we are at new business, and, uh, Ms. Spalding, do you want to do the, um, employees one?
Yes.
Do you want to read that?
Yes.
Explain it and read it out, that'd be cool.
Yes. We, on behalf of the Newburyport Public School Committee, I'd like to read a proclamation of praise of the employees of Newburyport Public Schools. The Newburyport School Committee acknowledges all of our school district's employees who have kept our schools running during, during an extraordinary time, characterized by numerous and sometimes unpredictable challenges. We thank you for your hard work, dedication, and can-do attitudes. We praise you for showing up again and again when the days grew long and the pandemic feels endless. Your example has led our students, demonstrating accomplishment and achievement. As a result, Newburyport students have not experienced the level of learning loss that was anticipated due to remote learning. We deeply appreciate your personal efforts and your professional capabilities as educators. On behalf of the children and students of the Newburyport Schools, please accept our profound thanks. The Newburyport School Committee.
Do we have an official copy of this to all sign, or?
We do. I have a copy here for everybody to sign.
Okay.
We can include in the next packet.
Um, and there's another, um, resolution, a parent emailed us concerned about, um, firearm storage safety in the community. Um, and Ms. Spalding retrieved this language from the Clark County, Nevada?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, basically, uh, why don't you explain it? You want, do you want to read the whole thing?
Yes, it's not, it's not too long.
Okay.
Um, this is a, um, it's called a Secure Storage Notification Resolution, and we, I borrowed the language from this Clark County, um, so, and we can also change this. This is a draft. I just wanted to make sure they're credited. Okay. Um, whereas evidence strongly suggests the secure firearm storage is an essential component to any effective strategy to keep schools and students safe, whereas an estimated four-point-six million American children live in households with at least one loaded unlocked firearm. Whereas every year, nearly three-hundred-and-fifty children under the age of eighteen unintentionally shoot themselves or someone else. That's roughly one unintentional shooting per day, and seventy-seven percent of these incidents take place inside of a home. Whereas another five-hundred-and-ninety children die by gun suicide each year, most often using guns belonging to a family member. Whereas in incidents of gun violence on school grounds, seventy-nine percent of active shooters are current students or recent graduates, and seventy-eight percent of shooters under the age of eighteen obtain their guns from their own home, a relative's home, or from friends. Whereas research shows that secure firearm storage practices are associated with up to an eighty-five percent reduction in the risk of self-inflicted and unintentional firearm injuries among children and teens. Whereas the U.S. Secret Service National Threat Assessment Center recommends the importance of appropriate storage of weapons because many school attackers use firearms acquired from their homes. Whereas across the country, lawmakers, community members, and local leaders are working together to implement public awareness campaigns such as Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America's Be Smart Program, which is endorsed by the National P T A, and which encourages secure gun storage practices and highlights the public safety risks of unsecured guns. Whereas keeping students, teachers, and staff safe from the threat of gun violence should be the responsibility of all adult stakeholders at each of our school sites. Whereas state law requires adults to securely store their firearms where a child is likely to gain access to the firearm. Whereas in order to continue with prevention measures to increase student and school safety, we must act now. Now, therefore, be it resolved, be it further resolved, that the school committee directs the superintendent to create an appropriate letter to parents and guardians that explains the importance of secure gun storage and the legal obligations to protect minors from accessing irresponsibly stored guns, to be included in annual registration materials at each school site, and requiring a signature acknowledgement awareness of guns, of secure gun storage responsibilities. And be it finally resolved that the school committee and the superintendent will continue to work with local law enforcement agencies, health agencies, and nonprofits to collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents of their obligations regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes. Adopted this twentieth day of December, two thousand and twenty-one, by the Newburyport School Committee.
All right, thanks. Um, when we got that letter, the, um, parent who wrote in referenced that the Plymouth School District has a similar document, so I called the chair of the school committee down there today. Had a great conversation, uh, but she was on the road traveling and is going to call me tomorrow and then send us the version that Plymouth District has. So I think we should take a look at it. Um, it might be slightly different. I don't know how this one was, how the comparison, and how they actually implemented it in Plymouth. They're one of two or three districts in the state that have done that. Um, and then you would certainly be involved in that superintendent. So if everybody is all right with that, I'll send it off to everyone once I receive it from the chair of the Plymouth, uh, School Committee. Does that sound good to?
Then it becomes old business on the agenda.
Correct, right. So then it'll be an actual agenda item at that point, so.
In the next packet, so people could read.
Um, and that will be a changeover too. It'll be a different group sitting here by the time that happens.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
In that, the email we got provided some.
Context is why we're even talking about this.
Yeah.
Could you let everybody know?
Uh, yeah, I'm not going to be able to say it off the top of my head.
Right.
I can open it.
I guess I could if you want.
Yeah. Um.
The school committee received an email from a concerned parent whose child was, was upset after going to school last Friday and learning of the TikTok viral video that threatened gun violence across the United States. So this particular student was suffering and having anxiety due to this video, and we thought that, I thought, or all of us thought, I think that, um, this is, this is a, a good way to help address and, um, address the mental health of our students. It's free, and it's just saying that we support sensible gun storage. It doesn't ask much of the district. It would be another paper to include in, in the registration process, and it helps protect our children. So that's how it came about.
Well said. Thank you very much. All right, thanks. Um, and I mentioned that the makeup of the school committee would be changing by the time we have our next meeting, so I guess at this time, it's time to thank those who provided many years of service to the school committee who will be leaving, uh, Mr. Stephen Cole after seventeen years. Is that what it is?
That's correct.
Seventeen years for Mr. Cole. Thank you so much, sir. David Hochheiser, s- eight years? Six years for Mr. Hochheiser. Twelve years for Mayor Holliday as chair and mayor, so here you go. Thank you very much. Uh, and then Mr. Reardon, Mayor Elec, will be then sitting in the chair to my right, uh, at the next meeting, I believe, right? Running the show.
Yes.
Yes, that's, uh, big changes, and we have our new members, uh, Sarah Hall and Juliet Walker, who I believe are both here in the audience tonight. You must be getting excited. Um, yeah, does anybody else want to have anything to say, Mayor?
Well, I just, again, want to say thank you to this committee. We've, uh, you know, certainly have seen some changes, and some of us have worked with, uh, numerous members over the years and, as well as superintendents, and it's, uh, been a pleasure working with all of you in terms of, with the goal of moving our schools forward. I think we've made a tremendous amount of progress in our schools over the past twelve years, and I'm really, really proud of the work that we've done, and it couldn't have happened without the support of members of the school committee and members of the school district, so I thank you very much for that. And it's been a pleasure working with you, Superintendent Gallagher, and I, uh, wish you the very best. And I know you'll have to pick up another new, uh, candidate for school committee down the road, uh, sometime in January, so there will be additional changes coming. Um, and.
Mr. Cole, have you got any, any words you'd like to say?
Uh, well, I guess I would just like to thank everyone that I've had the opportunity to work with. I guess I find school committee work to be an apprenticeship, and I think we learn a lot from each other. The last couple of years have been especially difficult, but one thing that has come through is the humanity that everybody has come together under, and it's allowed us to, eh, especially our staff. Our staff has worked really hard, and, you know, there's thousands of moving parts to every school day, and I think the fact that our staff has worked, uh, under the principle that no job is important, more important than another. And it's just been really nice to see that come through. I think it benefits everyone in our community, everyone at the schools, and ultimately the students. So I'm very grateful for, uh, everyone who's come together to, you know, work toward that goal, uh, to include, you know, public safety and emergency services personnel, and, uh, and I, I've really been honored to serve on this committee for as long as I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. David?
Yeah, uh, I would absolutely like to thank everybody for the time. Um, just apologize in arrears for the contentious manner, which we got sometimes, but whatever. Um, wish you guys all the best of luck as things move on. Tell you, it's been a, it's been a very interesting bunch of years serving and learning a lot. Um, I also can't help but think, looking at the three of us who are leaving, about an issue that we brought up and kind of let go, which is what happens to all of the documents that we have saved on various computers that we personally own. And I'm thinking about, uh, the mayor, and I'm not sure if you work on a city computer or a personal computer, or Mr. Cole, who's been at this for a long time and probably chaired a few committees. I know I was chair of policy for a couple of years. Um, it's a lot of documentation to. Um, it's a lot of documentation to kind of just be fluttering about.
You have no idea.
Oh, I, 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 I do. I, I have a pretty general idea, but um, you know, which is why, you know, we started talking about this a couple of years back and really never got anywhere with it. Um, but, but I guess I, I urge you guys to think about this in the not-so-distant future. Um, how to make sure that, you know, nothing is lost when the three of us leave and then finding a way to to keep things around in the future. It just, it still feels really awkward to me watching us walk away and, you know. I know there's a lot of stuff stored everywhere. Like you were saying, Mayor, we have no idea, but.
Well, I mean, because.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. But, I mean, I would just recommend, if you don't mind, Joanne, that if there's things that you have on your computer that you think could potentially be, you know, um, because I know at one point we were losing, we had to go back to a former school committee member because we were missing evaluation stuff. And so, and he still had it. So if there's things that you have as school committee members that you think haven't been put into the policy book or, or whatever, or a document that should be, we should send it to Joanne. Is that, I, I think that's probably is the best thing to do, and you can put them in a folder and keep them until there's a need or a request for them. You know, I don't, you know, I don't know what, how else we can do it. I mean, I, I mean, a lot of this stuff is public anyway, you know. And then just delete, 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 delete.
All right.
I mean, I'm having a good time doing that.
Yeah, Sean? Oh, yeah?
So I have a couple citations here from the Massachusetts House of Representatives for our departing members. So I'm just going to read it here. Uh, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Stephen Cole and David Hochheiser for your 17 and six years of dedicated service respectively to the people of Newburyport as a member of the school committee. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for the future, good fortune, and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 20th day of December 2021 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, and signed by Speaker of the House Ronald Mariano and our state representative James Kelpus.
Does anybody else have the uh, new business? Oh, it's Mr. Gallagher. So.
Yes, and I think all three members are very humble. Um, and have always, I think, put the students and families first in Newburyport, and really, we're never looking for accolades and, and all of that. So I wanted to, at least I know on behalf of the school committee and our central office team, to give a little token of appreciation. Nothing too great, but it's something. Um, so we have a card for both uh, Steve Cole and David Hochheiser that we'd like to hand out. Um, I'll tell you what's in it. It is Dunkin' Donuts. Okay?
You shove the donut in the envelope?
That's right. That's right. No matter how bad times are, you can always have a coffee. And if not, if it's really bad, I suggest go for the glazed donut.
Not, not even Angry Donuts, huh? Just dunks?
And then for the Honorable Mayor Holliday, we also have some uh, gift for you. And a nice beautiful plant on your way out.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. And on that note?
All right, um.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody.